Good morning, and thank you for joining us for the April 22 Cedric County Commission Meeting. I'm Van Williams with Cedric County Communications. A reminder that we remain under stay-at-home orders to protect us all during the coronavirus pandemic. Please stay home, and when you must go out, practice social distancing as well as good hygiene, such as washing your hands frequently, covering your coughs and sneezes, and even consider wearing face coverings to help prevent the spread of the virus. You can stay updated on COVID-19 news at the Cedric County website. Let's go to today's BLCC agenda. The agenda includes a COVID-19 update from Health Director Adrian Byrne, a status on stay-at-home orders, and a discussion about property taxes. Good morning Commissioners and Chairman Pete Meitzner.
Thank you, Van. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Cedric County meeting of Wednesday, April 22 of 2020. I hope everybody's being safe, practicing distancing, and all the hygienic things we've been talking about. So with that, we will get the meeting started. Commissioners, thanks for being here again, and we'll call the order of business, and we'll call it to order. Madam Clerk, next item.
And vacation. To be observed by a moment of silence, please remain standing for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Madam Clerk, next item.
Roll call. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Chairman Meitzner.
Present. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public agenda.
Commissioners, you've received a copy of the public agenda items that have been submitted to us. Does anybody have any one of these that they want to read or comment on? Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One of the things I noticed as I read through these is that we received some from anonymous at anonymous@gmail.com. We received other ones from Jane Doe. When we hold our formal meetings, we always ask the individuals to sign in, and they give their name and address. And this, we have no way of replying to them. So I make a motion that we accept into our minutes of the meeting for those that provided valid contact information so that if we need to be able to follow up, we can. But if they don't want to provide contact information and valid names, I see no reason to enter them into the public record. Thank you. With that, I make that motion.
Okay.
Second that.
Yeah, the motion is second. That's a great idea, Mr. Dennis. We don't, we want to avoid things like that. So, thank you. Any other comments? Being done, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. So we will submit the ones that are identified into the public record on the minutes. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Dennis. Madam Clerk, next item.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, regular meeting minutes of April 1, 2020.
Commissioner, you've had a chance to review the minutes from our April 1 meeting. If there's any comments or changes, additions, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
They're moved.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Donnell. Thank you. Been a motion is second to accept the minutes from the April 1 meeting. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item.
New business. Item B, Cedric County Health Department update on COVID-19.
Hello, Ms. Adrian. Welcome to the Commission meeting.
Good morning Commissioners and Board of Health. So as reported by John Hopkins, Kansas has 2,025 cases of COVID-19, and in Cedric County, we have a total of 283. You'll notice that our number of cases is higher than what is reported by KDHE. Our numbers are correct. With KDHE's system, if they don't mark, check a box when the information comes into their system, then they have to wait until they close the case. And so our numbers are very similar, but you'll notice that there is a difference just because of that glitch in their system, but our numbers are correct. We've been working with officials at Clearwater Nursing and Rehabilitation Center on a daily basis to support and monitor the cluster. Right now, there are 45 cases associated with this cluster and two related deaths. We are working with the center to test their staff as they were able to test all of their residents. Last week, you remember that we were able to ramp up our testing because of more supplies slowly coming in, and we have been testing as many as 100 residents per day. So so far this week, on the two days, we've taken samples from approximately 200 residents, and so far today, on this rainy day, there are 21 scheduled. We're still scheduling up to 11 o'clock, and so expect to see those numbers rise. We still don't have an accurate picture of the disease in Cedric County because of the lack of testing that we have. We need people who have COVID-19 symptoms, which is a cough, shortness of breath, fever, to go ahead and call 211 so they can take you through a criteria of symptoms. And again, they're very loose at this point. Last week, KDHE still required people to have a fever and then one other symptom, and they have lifted that. So you just have to have two symptoms for KDHE for our other lab. If someone's having respiratory problems, that's enough to get you scheduled to be tested. So we're asking the healthcare providers to test patients or refer them to the 211 system. I know it's been frustrating, and we believe there's a number of people that are just staying at home like they do with the flu or whatever else, that they are ill and just riding it out. But we really encourage people to call 211 and get tested because that way we'll be able to do contact tracing and find out who they have been around, and then can get those people out of circulation as far as in quarantine. So call 211. KDHE reports that more than 2,500 Cedric County residents have been tested for COVID-19. The Health Department has taken samples from more than 400 people since last week, or in last week, we sampled 250. We do have a more comprehensive data dashboard on the Cedric County website, so please visit that to learn more about the disease in Cedric County. And again, that's based on the testing that we've been able to do, so it is limited, but it is a lot more information than was previously there. As the number of cases increase, more information can be shared. And then just as a reminder, what a collaborative effort that this is, even for Cedric County Health Department. The Health Department, we began our crisis response on March 1, and we have over 110 people involved in that COVID-19 response team. And of the 110, 20 have been assigned to the Health Department from other county departments or city departments, Human Resources, Comp Care EMS, Sheriff's Office Corrections, Communications, City of Wichita Parks, and also volunteers from Medical Reserve Corps and Rubicon. So I appreciate, we appreciate everyone that is part of that team, and then everyone else in Cedric County that is fighting COVID-19, and our residents that are taking it seriously and doing a great job with physical distancing and keeping fingers away from eyes, nose, and mouth. So once Tim and Rusty provide their reports, I'll come back up and share a plan on how we can start the recovery process in Cedric County.
Okay, Adrian. Thank you for the update. Looking forward to the next couple of reports. Anybody got a question meanwhile, or we want to wait till we're done? All right. Looks like we're going to wait. Mr. Tim, welcome. Thanks again, Adrian, for all your work.
Good morning Commissioners. Tim Kaufman, Deputy County Manager. Since our meeting last week, as Adrian mentioned, Health Department ran their drive-through collection site five times, and those samples being tested both by the state lab and the Quest Lab. Sampling site has averaged over 90 visitors each day this week. New sampling schedule has been extended to five days per week, and next week, we will extend the hours that will be available for sampling so that we can hopefully, again, increase the number of folks that are being sampled and ultimately tested. If you've been by the West Central location, over the weekend, a tent was installed, and that will allow us to continue to operate our drive-through sampling site during inclement weather, days like today. Hopefully, it will not suppress the numbers of folks coming in. Adrian mentioned, sometimes people just aren't getting out because they don't understand the new criteria, but we're open and available and ready to sample folks. Current inventory, as of this morning, is 1,001 sampling kits, including 482 that were received just yesterday from the state in two different shipments. We've developed a new partnership with WSU Tech, and through, with their help, we anticipate receiving another 1,000 swabs this week, and a shipment of 5,000 swabs should arrive during the week of May 5. We still have outstanding orders of 14,000 swabs with shipping dates that occur anytime between next week and August of this year. Some of those dates keep getting pushed. Some of them are on the near horizon, so hopefully, we'll see additional swabs come in. I'd also like to recognize the assistance that we have received, both from the business community and from Senator Moran's office, in identifying leads for us in terms of testing capabilities. We're now evaluating three additional labs to increase testing capacity to help match the increased sampling capacity that we'll soon be able to employ. We're also at a point, I think Adrian touched on it a little bit, that we want to, again, remind the community about sampling and that the testing criteria have been relaxed to the point where anyone who's exhibiting two symptoms, including fever, persistent dry cough, shortness of breath, chest tightness, we encourage anybody who's not feeling well to call the 211 number, call their primary care doctor, or call that 211 number so that we can walk them through that screening process and get them in touch with a triage nurse that will help get them scheduled for a sampling if that's appropriate. Once again, I'd like to thank both the Health Department staff and purchasing staff as they continue to chase down leads and follow every lead that's referred to us as we continue to try and identify supplies that we need for sampling and testing. This was really an encouraging week in terms of the supplies that we've received in our capacity, and I think that the coming weeks will continue to be so. So be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Well, that's good news, Tim, that we're gathering more information. I know we're here, each of us are hearing bits and pieces of these news items that seem to come in two or three times a day.
Every time we get a lead, we've got staff that jump on it and try and chase it down.
That's good. Some questions for Tim? Yeah?
Thank you, Chairman. Just curious, I think last week, we talked a little bit about changing the locations of some of the testing. Is that still part of the plan, or still doing primarily just Central?
We're still working on West Central. We are developing a plan to see if it makes sense to do some limited testing at the East 9th location for the Health Department. That would put us in that 67214 zip code, and that may be a real appeal.
I would assume we're capturing all of the costs for all this testing, so the cares, we talked about yesterday during staff meeting, but the cares reimbursement funds from the federal government would potentially be used for all the costs for this testing, so I'm sure we're probably tracking that very closely, I would assume.
Absolutely. So in addition to chasing down leads, we're also documenting everything that we spend very closely so that we can make sure that we get full reimbursement for any of these expenses.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Tim. Next up.
Chairman, I think Rusty's on the phone.
Oh. Hello, Rusty Leeds. You are on. Put the microphone. Okay, there you go.
I'm here.
Hi, Rusty.
Good morning.
Chairman, you're going to turn it up.
Good morning, Commissioners and Chairman.
Hold on just a minute.
Rusty Leeds, Public Safety Manager.
Rusty, just a second.
Okay.
I was supposed to turn you up a little bit. Hold on, I'm getting assistance by the Vice President of the telephone.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah. Yep. Thank you.
Okay. This is Rusty Leeds, Public Safety Manager. This will be the third weekly update on emergency operations center activity and personal protective equipment. So the EOC, Emergency Operations Center, continues to interact with and monitor state and federal level activities through twice-daily conference calls with the Kansas Department of Emergency Management and the various essential function, support function groups that are on and participate in that call. This week, we had 115 departments and agencies report their on-hand supplies and their usage rates to the Emergency Operations Center, as well as their current needs for protective equipment and supplies. So on average, collectively across that entire 115 department and agency system, we have about three weeks of staples, PPE supplies on hand. The staples being surgical masks, gloves, N95s, Tyvek suits, and face shields. So on average, about three weeks on hand across all of those agencies, and assuming that there's no increase in activities that stress our resources, that's kind of where we stand today. The EOC logistics team continues to work to fill gaps by tracking this data that I just discussed and distributing available supplies based on needs balanced against what those different entities have on hand. Just for perspective, our reported needs this week, which those come in on Tuesday, they have to end by end of business on Tuesday. So just for perspective, the needs that were reported equal about 450,000 pairs of gloves, about 10,000 N95 masks, and about 19,000 gowns per week across all of those entities.
Per week?
Per week. So that's just to give you some perspective. Now, understand that on-hand supplies include things that have come in from the Strategic National Stockpile, which at this point has been about three weeks ago, as well as items that we've received donations from different entities and stuff that we have purchased. And then some of these entities, obviously hospitals and others, are receiving donations, and they also are pursuing acquisitions on their own. So some of the supplies that they have, they're getting themselves. The EOC provides, again, fills gaps where if some entity is getting low on something and something they have not come in, we're filling those gaps, but trying to maintain enough on hand so that if we have somebody in crisis, we can get them what they need for short term and until we can fill the gap in another way. In normal times, we generally enjoy reliable source, reliable supply and delivery system, and currently, that reliable system has not been a thing that we've been able to enjoy. So as we continue in our response mode, and as we look here in the near future toward recovery, to be able to stabilize our supply and delivery system to the best of our ability. So a bit of good news in that area is that local businesses, again, have stepped up. Tim talked about that a little bit, and I mentioned it last week. But we had a business yesterday that began production, and they are going to provide between 1,200 and 1,500 gowns per week for about the next 11 to 12 weeks to the Emergency Operations Center to take up some of the slack in the gown arena. We had another local business yesterday that delivered 600 cloth-made masks that have been reviewed by EMS and by hospitals. These are masks that can be used to keep people masked up so that if they are coughing or talking, they're not inadvertently infecting somebody should they have the virus, be carrying the virus, and be asymptomatic. That business will continue to produce, and we will continue to receive masks from that business. And we have at least two other businesses that we are working with to produce those same types of masks. They're either currently producing or they're in the process of. So we hope to ramp up our supply of those types of surgical-type, local-made woven masks that help prevent people from spreading to others if they happen to have the virus and have no symptoms. And we also have a local business who is very close to initiating production, making Tyvek-type coveralls, so that will be another one. And then we have several businesses who are producing face shields, and at this point, I think, I think that we are in good shape for face shields for medical personnel, just from local supply based on the vendors who have ramped up and are manufacturing that type of device for us. Our PPE is designed for one use, and it's disposable, and really, it's best managed in that fashion. However, we understand that in short supply, it's always good to have a backup plan. And to that end, there are several departments that have initiated conservation efforts and employed different types of decontamination methods in order to be able to reuse some of those supplies at least a few times before they dispose and move on to a new one. The Healthcare Coalition, for the South Central Region, has secured a hydrogen peroxide vapor device that can be used for decontamination of protective equipment, including masks. There's some work to be done in order to make that functional, but the Healthcare Coalition is working on trying to get that device up and running here locally in Cedric County to be used by all partners whenever they're able to work out details. And then finally, the Emergency Operations Center logistics team is working through the Kansas Department of Emergency Management on a similar hydrogen-based vapor decontamination device that FEMA is, FEMA is the holder of that. FEMA has a contract with a company, and we have asked to at least be considered. We are working up details on how we could host that machine in Cedric County. There's a lot of work, there's some work still to be done on that, but that's another avenue we're looking at should we have a need to decontaminate, that this would provide another avenue for doing that. Finally, a local hotel, a management team from a local hotel reached out and offered to accommodate personnel, first responders, medical personnel, who might be in need of quarantine or isolation due to exposure and/or infection, if they are unable to go home in order to protect their families. Details on that have been worked out. And so if we do have personnel who have that type of need, we have a place that we can allow them to go and stay, at least until they're tested, or until we determine that they are not in a position where they would infect their families if they went home. So we were very appreciative of the offer from that hotel, and they've been very easy to work with. I just wanted you to know that's in place. We have had some employees who have been exposed. We have seen, recently, we've seen fast turnaround on the ability of, to get our first responders tested. If we believe they've been exposed after an appropriate amount of time, they're being tested promptly. So far, they've all tested negative, which allowed us to get them back in queue and get them back to duty in a more timely manner because they're not showing symptoms, and we know that they're not infected, so we're able to get them back to work quickly. So that's been very helpful as well. So with that, that's kind of my update. I'll stop there. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer it for you.
Well, Rusty, thank you. That's great information, and it sounds like we're a little better spot than we've been when we first started this a couple of weeks back. So I appreciate the community just continues to call and suggest and provide and donate. So thank you very much for hearing all that. Commissioner Dennis has a question.
Thank you, Chairman. Rusty, I understand that our Director of Emergency Services, Carl Link, will be moving to Texas in the near future. Because of how we're having to do business anymore, I don't know that we're going to be able to publicly thank him like we should of everything that he's done for Cedric County and how that he's ran emergency management during this crisis. So I thought that this time would probably be a great time for us to thank him for his efforts and wish him well in the future.
Yes, sir. We do appreciate the fact that Carl has been diligent in working to try to make emergency management a better department, and we will miss him. Sorry to see him go, but we appreciate the fact that he and his wife have an opportunity to get back closer to family and pursue a dream that they had. So we wish him well, but we hate to see him go.
Chairman.
Yes.
Rusty, do we, that, going back to the hotel conversation, is that hotel available to just Cedric County first responders, or are they opening up to the entire community of first responders to include hospital staff? How do we communicate that if that is available?
Yes, Commissioner, they will accommodate any first responders or medical personnel. It doesn't matter. I know that one hospital has also made those types of arrangements for their staff already, but they're willing to accommodate, and we will get that message pushed out this week. We were just working out the final details. We also have some FEMA money that's coming down through the Kansas Department of Emergency Management. They have pushed out some guidelines on that, so we will coordinate our efforts with this hotel. If we have to put personnel up there, we will coordinate that in conjunction with the FEMA money and tap into that to the extent that it's reasonable and allowable. But yes, we will, this is extended to all first responders and medical personnel across the county. So far, fortunately, we have not had a great need, but we've had a few instances where we've put people up, and so we're happy to have this resource.
That's great. That's great. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Rusty, thank you for the report. We're going to the next, now we're circling back to Adrian.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Rusty. Adrian, welcome back.
Chairman, are we ready to move from item B to C, or?
Oh.
I think that's the conclusion of item B.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, we receive and file.
Okay.
Second.
Been a motion is second to receive and file, item B. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item C, discussion of stay-at-home and gathering orders.
Commissioners, before Adrian gets started, let me preface this item a bit. As we know, the governor's stay-at-home order is being lifted on May 3, and her public gatherings order of 10 or less will expire on May 1. We have all seen some discussion at the national level of carefully considered reopening of America discussion that's beginning to gain traction for the last week or so. With both of these issues happening together in the near future, I thought it would be prudent to have a high-level public discussion today with Adrian here representing the Board of Health on what our future in Cedric County looks like regards to a careful and well-thought-out reopening. So the goals of today's, this agenda item, are twofold. One is to hear from Adrian a very high-level and work-in-progress type of plan that her staff has been working diligently on for the last several days, and to consider a review of some CDC overall guidelines as we move forward. And then the next thing would be to listen to and convene some meetings with the public, including the medical community, so local businesses, including the chamber, and your constituents out in the community over the next few days. And then at the 4/29 meeting, one week from today, bring in Adrian again and Dr. Minz. I think within a week, Adrian's plan may be a little bit more sharply focused, we'll have more data, we'll be another week into the timeline, and we'll also get to hear from Dr. Minz and look at decisions next week regarding stay-at-home and allowable gatherings that the Board of Health would deem prudent moving forward. So just wanted to lay that out for you, and now Adrian has a presentation, very, again, work-in-progress draft, and will be modified, I'm sure, by her and her staff over the next few days, but we want, at least want to give you some preliminary information of that. Adrian.
Thank you. So Adrian Byrne, Cedric County Health Department Director. So our first case in Kansas was on March 9. And our first case in Cedric County was March 19, which was just a little bit over a month ago. And I know that this month has probably been the longest in most of our lives, and a member, or a number of our community members have been really hit hard by the effects of this pandemic. COVID-19 is not going away. It is going to be part of what we're dealing with for quite some time. Most of us still do not have any immunities built up to COVID-19. Most of us still do not have any immunities built up to COVID-19. So this slide is talking about gating criteria. And if you look at any of the plans, the federal plan or Colorado or other plans that are starting to come out on a draft basis, they talk about gating criteria. And that's criteria that is recommended to be in place before moving on to the next phase. So that's what this gating really is, is just what we need before moving on to reopening our community. We've been in conversations, I've been in conversation with, as of yesterday, Johnson County, Shawnee County, Wyandotte, and the governor, Dr. Minz, Secretary Norman, just beginning to have all of us on the same conversation was good because we've done a lot of piecemeal during this time, but not been, had the opportunity to all connect and just hearing a little bit about where each of those counties are. So our goal is to be, have similar structure. There may be differences in dates within any of the phases, but the goal is a similar structure. And this week also be reaching out to our surrounding counties to see what their thoughts are and to get on the same page. So proposed county gating criteria, this is what we're looking at and really people are looking at all over the country. And that is testing ability, having adequate supplies to test more of our community. Cases, reduction in cases over a 14-day period before moving to the next phase, reduction in those symptoms, the PPE availability, as Rusty talked about, for our first responders and our hospital staff, businesses, our community. And looking at business practices, really guidance for businesses to continue to follow that are currently operating, that may be adding to their workforce as they return. And those businesses that are opening up for the first time during this and helping them with business practices to stay safe. So where we are lacking, and this isn't a surprise for anyone because we've, the county's been very open about this struggle as most communities are, all communities are around the country. And that's, we don't have adequate testing supplies. Slowly starting to trickle in more than ever before, still not near what we need. But they are starting to come in and so we're feeling definitely more hopeful about that ability. And just being able to increase our testing, our sampling capacity to 100 a day from where we were is very promising. And the protective, personal protective equipment, again, needs to be adequate before we move to the next stage. Kansas is near the bottom for available testing out of the country. And because we haven't been able to adequately test, we can't really have confidence in what our numbers are or are not telling us. Kansas has only tested just a little bit over 19,000 people so far. That's a pretty small number with over 2,100 positive cases. Kansas has had 39 outbreaks. In Sedgwick County, we have tested not just, it's not the health department, but all of the partners because there's a number of people testing on a small ability in Sedgwick County. But all of us together in Sedgwick County have tested over 2,500 with 283 positives. If I can remember to turn it the right way. So our, the phased approach, and if you look at the other draft plans around the country, you'll see that some of them have, a lot of them have three phases, some have four. We have a four-phase approach with phase one being where we are, that we are in phase one of slowing the spread. And since COVID-19 is part of our new normal, we expect that spread is going to continue to occur during those phases, may even continue to have some outbreaks during those phases. The threshold for returning to the previous stage will be a sustained rise in cases over a five-day period. So the important thing in these phases is that it's not just we go to phase one and two, three, four, that we're going to be closely monitoring as we loosen up restrictions to monitor what's occurring. And if we need to move back to the previous stage to protect our community, then we'll move back to the previous stage. Physical distancing or social distancing will continue with limited gathering sizes. And we've all been used to the social distancing. But I think when we think about physical distancing, it creates a different picture in our mind. And I know that most of our community has been doing a really fabulous job with that physical, social distancing. And that has made a big difference with where we are so far. So phase one, again, is where we are, currently operating under these restrictions with a stay-at-home order, public gatherings 10 or less. And then the criteria for moving to phase two is a 14-day window of decreased viral activity as far as positive, as far as cases, in addition to adequate PPE. Phase two is when we loosen restrictions and again, that is our next phase because we are in phase one. And the objective in phase two is to cautiously but quickly loosen restrictions on businesses. We'll continue to have restrictions to reduce exposure to elderly, to our older population and our vulnerable populations. And we will continue to evaluate implementations of these measures as we transfer, as we transition from one phase to the next. Phase three is when we would lift most restrictions. And the objective in phase three is to lift the majority of our restrictions. Expect to see a number of restrictions still in place to mitigate unnecessary risk such as limited gathering size. And then phase four is the established protections. And this is only going to occur when we have a vaccine, when a vaccine has been developed. And so this is what I mean about this being part of our new normal as far as COVID-19 being in our community and continuing to focus on our major goal of continuing to protect our community from COVID-19. In phase four, expect to see all orders and restrictions lifted. The health recovery plan is currently in draft form, as Tom mentioned, and is being further developed. Dr. Minz is aware of this plan and has had input on it and will continue to review it as we make modifications. So I'm open to any questions that you might have.
Well, thank you, Adrian. Kind of the first phase, phase stuff that we've seen, but it's a nice plan. Tell me, you said that this is, so Dr. Minz is talking to Dr. Lee, Dr. Lee Norman?
Yes.
And others in the health officers of the other large counties?
Yes. And we had a conversation yesterday with the health directors and their health officers, Secretary Norman and the governor, and then the large, the other large counties.
Okay. And it was a fairly collective agreement, this is the phase, this is the plan?
They haven't, the governor has asked that each county that has a plan because I'm not sure that all have a plan at this, at this point.
Right.
But to send our plans to her so that she'll be, that she'll be aware of them. And I've sent the plan to our larger departments so that they can be aware of what we're looking at. And then again, we'll be getting with our neighboring counties and health departments to see what their thoughts are about reopening.
Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. So if we could go to the 14-day window of decreased viral activity, what does that exactly mean? Is there a percentage of a decrease that we would see? I mean, can you explain that a little bit?
Yes. So that basically means that, that we begin to see our numbers decrease and with not-
Well, I get that, but like a certain number, I mean, is it, you know, we have, we had 30 yesterday, right? We increased by 30 yesterday. Would it be, we went, we only had 15 the next day? Like what, what is that a percentage?
It's going to be, so it'll, it'll start to show a trend. And so not just movement down in one or two days, but a 14-day period where we see those numbers continue to decline. And we're going to be in a little bit of a better place as we are able to test more people because right now we just, our numbers only tell us a limited amount.
Okay. And then phase two, restrictions on businesses. How are those, which businesses, how are they determined? Who, you know, who determines what businesses and how are those determined?
Those are going to be, that is a major part of discussions that are going to be happening, that's going to be happening. And the, the goal is to loosen restrictions for businesses to be able to get back to operation knowing that safety and precautions that those operating now are taking with the social, the physical distancing as much as possible and the, you know, cleaning the surfaces and wearing masks, PPE, those, all those. That's part of the, when I said PPE needs to be not abundant, but we need to ensure that we have PPE for our businesses as they return back so that we can help protect their employees. So, and not all can, whether they're assembly, there are some businesses that have a difficult time because of the nature of what they do to have that physical distancing. And I've spoken with, with a couple of those who have called for guidance. And that's, it's extra important for them to have their masks, their PPE so that they can practice as safely as they can given their restrictions.
I might chime in here, Commissioner. It, it really will be a discussion for all businesses to open safely, all. Even, even those that are close to the Aradona essential. And I'm talking everything from barber shops and hairdressers to retail. That's the discussion that has to be had. And this is the first time we've had a discussion in this room about PPEs for people. We focused our attention on PPEs for emergency responders and doctors and nurses. And now entering into this new phase, we need to have a discussion about PPEs for people, hand sanitizer, potentially masks that Adrian brings up. But I think that we're going to spend the next several days looking at guidelines and suggestions for all businesses to safely operate. And for example, if you have the ability to socially distance and maintain spacing, that's one thing. If you do not have that capacity, how you limit your capacity of people inside the office or the use of PPEs to give some level of protection for employees, that's the next round of discussions we'll be having over the next, you know, one to 15 days so we can begin to give guidelines to all businesses to begin to open.
So with the expected, you know, I mean, all the projections are saying that we're going to hit a peak kind of the end of April. And so if, if that does happen, let's say, when, when do we make a decision? I mean, I think that you said you wanted us to make a decision by next, next Wednesday, so seven days from now, let's just say hypothetically, we do see a rise. And is that something, I mean, is it a hard and fast date, I guess, is what I'm asking?
The only hard and fast date is we know when the governor's orders are expiring. So if the commission takes no action or Dr. Minz takes no action, the, we are back open for business essentially May the 4th. And so I think what we'll want to do at next week's meeting is hear from Adrian, updated information, her analysis, hear from Dr. Minz, and then either the Board of Health or Dr. Minz, hopefully in conjunction, make a decision that is best for the county as far as next phase and next steps.
I mean, it has been encouraging, our hospital system weekly calls as far as, you know, the, the information that's coming from them. So that, I mean, that has been encouraging as far as capacity to help folks. And I know that that's one thing that we need to take into consideration. But, you know, this virus doesn't really have a timeline. And I think it's important for us to understand, like previously, I mean, from, you know, the pandemic of 1918, how the second wave was actually worse than the first. And so, I mean, I think there's a lot to take into consideration. I appreciate, you know, the thought that's going into this. I really do think it's important to talk to everybody, as you mentioned earlier, as far as the whole entire community as a whole, because I think everybody has a stake in this game and there is a lot to consider. So I'll probably have some more questions, but that's it for now. Thanks.
Okay. Some other questions? Yep, go ahead. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to make a couple of comments, maybe have a question or two. But one thing you did not mention, which I think is the most critical part of this whole thing, is what's happening within the hospitals. We have way more prevalence of COVID-19 in our community today than we did when we started this, when we started these orders in Sedgwick County. No question. But we have more cases in the hospitals. But we also have quite a bit of capacity, if I understand correctly, of what's going on inside the hospitals. That to me ought to be the number one measurement that helps, I like to use the word throttle. Throttle's a policy, whether we should loosen restrictions or have some concern about the public's activities, it ought to be based on what's happening within those hospitals. So I don't, I'm a little surprised to see that's not on this list here. I mean, number of cases in the community is, is not the only thing we ought to be looking at.
And hospitals is on the list as far as the gating criteria.
Okay. All right. Well, I would just say, if we wait until next Wednesday to make a recommendation, we still don't know what Dr. Minz is going to, is going to do. Again, if I understand correctly, he has the authority to issue a stay-at-home order if that's what he wants to do. I don't know when he'll make that decision, but I guess he doesn't have to make it until the very end of the state's order. In fact, we're not sure right now whether the state's going to extend their own order or not. We don't know that yet. I would just, I would like to encourage the state to, to recognize the fact that our state is very diverse. We don't have the same thing happening in every, in every county. Most of the counties have little to no COVID-19. A few of the counties have some, like Sedgwick County. But the reality is, local control is a lot better than state control. I think we can, we can throttle our policy better based on what's happening here. So I'd like to get that message to the governor that we ought to be making policy for our community based on what's happening in our own community. But I don't, I don't think that she ought to be extending the order simply because of what's happening, you know, in four or five, four or five counties to every county in the entire state of Kansas. And I think that our businesses ought to have some predictability. The sooner we start making these decisions, the better it is for them to be able to plan for their employees and for what they would do when, when these orders are lifted, so they know what to plan for. If we don't make this, make the decision until the end of next week, then they have very little time to respond. So I think we ought to be talking about these things ahead of time with, if nothing else theoretical, what, you know, what are we going to do? If we hit this 14-day, you know, reduction in cases statewide, where are we going to end up? Are they, will they in fact let their order rescind their own order or should they let it expire? And what would Dr. Minz do in that case? What would be the objective criteria that he'll be looking at to make a decision whether or not he's going to extend an order here in Sedgwick County or not? And then finally, I think there are gathering numbers that ought to be solely up to the Board of County Commissioners. I understand that we have the authority to make those, those orders as a board and, or it sounds like Dr. Minz can also make the same orders. But I'd like to see that sit back on the Board of Health rather than have Dr. Minz make the gathering order policy for Sedgwick County. So that's just some comments, but thank you for, thank you for presenting this morning.
And Commissioner Howell, I've got a couple of thoughts about an order of events that could potentially happen assuming that we continue on a normal. But I'll share those in a few minutes. Other questions? Michael?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Similar to what Johnson County is doing with their reopening task force, Chairman Eiler put together a group of community stakeholders, both elected officials, regular citizens, people from nonprofits, healthcare, you know, I think it's about a dozen people or so. I'd be interested in empowering you, Mr. Chairman, in getting a task force like that together so that we do have experts from the restaurant industry, from the retail industry, from nonprofits and everything else. So whatever we as a board need to do going forward, I think it would be imperative for us to do something similar so that you can have experts weighing in. Because we know you're extremely talented, Mr. Chairman, in a variety of fields, but not every field. And so I think that this would be a great way. And they've already started, their first meeting is this morning at 10:30 in Johnson County. So I, I think we should be following that. I, I think they're our, our most similar county in the state. And I think it would be wise for us to, to follow their lead. They, they obviously had cases start before we did. They started- They started their stay-at-home order more than, you know, a, a week or so before we did. So, I think following their timeline, we're about a week behind them, would be very beneficial for us because people are getting restless. People are very concerned about the economic situation in Sedgwick County. We've all seen the reports about domestic violence and violent crime going up dramatically. And that's direct causation from the stay-at-home order. So, people are losing their lives, unfortunately, because of this. So, anyway, thank you, Ms. Chairman. That's just my suggestion.
Yes, Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. First of all, can you email this, a copy of this plan to each of us?
Absolutely.
Good. One of the things that I'm asked constantly, and I'm sure all of the commissioners are, in emails and voicemails and so forth that we get are, what is your plan for moving forward? And it'd be handy to have this so we could send it out to them so that they could give us feedback on, on this. I, I like Commissioner O'Donnell's idea about the reopening task force of some sort. But that task force, one of the things that I've been thinking about is we need to involve the chamber in this somehow.
They're in it, in Johnson County.
And so that they represent the businesses and they're the ones that are on the front lines and know what, what they need to do in order to be able to open. Besides all of the emails and voicemails and phone calls that I've been receiving, Saturday, I went out for the first time, honestly. I've been trying my best to follow the orders we've given and stay at home. I went to two large box stores on Saturday. I couldn't get in the parking lots, let alone into the stores. So, what concerns me about that is that we have businesses that are thriving during this and we have other businesses that are starving because of this. And I don't know that, I don't know that when we're in a pandemic, if we can worry about a fairness issue. But if the public is out there anyway, in such an extent that I can't even get into a parking lot to, to go in and make a purchase, and probably less than 10% of the people had a mask on. I had a mask on and gloves when I went in. But less than 10% of the people had anything on. So if they're not spreading it and we're not seeing a spike and we're having this degree of, of, of people congregating in very small spots, we got an email the other day about herd, maybe? Herd immunity. Maybe this idea that, let it see if it can run its course. I don't know. I'm not an expert by any means. We need experts to tell us, are we doing the right thing right now? Is the right thing to, to damage these small businesses and, and have other businesses thrive? Is the right thing that we're doing to, to say that we're staying at home? And yet, people aren't staying at home. And so obviously, if they're not staying at home and they're not wearing protective equipment, they're spreading this if it's happening, but I'm not seeing a spike. We're seeing it grow. I, I am very concerned about where we're going in the future and what kind of decision that we need to make in a week. And I haven't seen the, the numbers grow on how many people are in our hospitals. And as Commissioner Hal said, that's, that's an important thing. If, the whole idea that we had was we had to flatten the curve so that we could keep those hospitals from being overwhelmed. The hospitals, from what I can see, are not being overwhelmed. So are we doing the right thing? That's my biggest question. And that's the question I keep getting from the public is, what is the right thing for us to move forward? So, I appreciate that you're doing, working on this right now. But, and I am a conservative person at heart. But maybe that conservative person says that we need to have businesses open in order to get our economy back online. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Well, maybe, let, let me share this. There was a, there's a, Great Witch Top Partnership has convened a, a COVID task force. Tom and I were on a Zoom call with them all yesterday. There, and you were?
No, but there is a task force already in our community.
Right. And there is 25 people probably there, I'm gonna guess. Remember, we were at 40? Okay.
And they meet weekly.
Right, and they meet weekly, just really to get information. But it's a good cross-section. Here, here's a thought that, that, that I have. We are, we've been invited, Tom and I have been invited to, to meet with the Executive Committee of the Chamber. So that's this afternoon or tomorrow? Tomorrow, okay. And, and to share what we know and to hear their feedback. And I've had, yesterday was, was, and the day before, but really yesterday was quite busy, conversations with the governor's office, our major nonprofit here in town, meaning United Way, church, a couple of church bishops, the director of the largest retail center we have in our city, a couple of restaurant franchise owners that own good restaurants here in town, as well as in other states. So I had a lot of feedback coming in. I would like to think, based on, I, I agree with Commissioner Hal about waiting is, is, we need to maybe be a little more aggressive. So I'm suggesting that, hadn't even run this by Tom yet, that, that Friday, this Friday, we convene a, a Zoom call or whatever, WebEx, it doesn't matter, with key, this key committee that Michael O'Donnell's talking about. I've got the membership written down of who I'd like to invite along with, I've talked to Susie Santo, Miss Wichita, and a few others. So maybe Friday, we discuss and, and let them weigh in. I think unless Mr. Papoun objects, we could publicize. I'd like for you all to be part of it, just to watch it and, and just have input mainly from, from them. And then if, if as soon as, today's Wednesday and you have, Adrian has information every day, every hour, maybe as soon as Monday, we convene a special meeting where that would be a week before the expiration of the governor's, Sunday. So on Monday, maybe we convene a special meeting where we collectively feel like what we think would be a recommendation to give to Dr. Minns. And maybe that's, or we either try to make a recommendation so the public, if we end up opening up businesses, either all or limited or whatever, they need, they need a week to, to make sure they can hire people and if they needed food supplies and whatever. So I think it'd be, from a business perspective, it'd be good that we give them a, a tentative week notice that hey, and if we find that, that we can't, then we all, we would always have Wednesday, a week from now, to, to reconvene again. And then who knows what's happening? I mean, we're in the, we're in the early part of these crucial days.
Yep.
Really, right, the 22nd to the 28th is what we've been talking about. So, it was a lot. And I even talked to two of our major, we know that the commercial, I mean, our major industrial employers, they've kinda got their, their plans and their act together quite well. I also talked to WSU Tech about they're doing some training that they wanna do to help support another huge initiative that might be very beneficial to our, to our deal. So, with that, we can discuss on, on a Friday call with key people, things like, and we've had this discussion, and I know that the governor's office has three meetings today with, with state chamber or, or local chamber and, I can't remember who the third person is. So there's a lot of moving parts going on right now. And there is the discussion of, of all of the things that you're talking about, Adrian, you know, protect, everybody's getting aware of how do they protect their employees and their potential customers. But the, a discussion that came up that's really unique is that do we, and it's not, I guess it's not unique because I've got Ohio and Texas restaurant documentation that they are trying to roll out to plan. So do you take, instead of going from 10 to 20, 10 to 30, whatever, you take the, the occupancy of that restaurant and then take a percentage of that as, as the goal? If it's 120, y'all see that, you know, they have their workers. The workers are all good and clean and the kitchen and everything else. But the occupancy is 120. If you take 40% of that, then that's 50 or something like that. If we take it from 10 to 40, there's some small restaurants and taco shops that they don't even hold 40 people. That's not fair to them and it's not fair to a really large restaurant. So maybe we think in terms of percentage, because they've already been, we, we've had reels in place for years where they're, they're hygienically cleaned and audited every quarter and, and most restaurants are very responsible and clean. Things like, if it's a bar restaurant, you don't stand at the bar, but you use your tables for restaurant. Retail shops, do you think in terms of the size of the square footage of the customers you serve? Not your back office, not your, not your manager's office and your closets, but the size of area that the public can attract? Knowing that six foot's needed, there's a discussion of a person of 10 square feet, five by five, is 10 square feet would help, would help the six-foot distancing? So you could take a, you know, if you've got 500 square feet divided by 10 square feet equals X. And then, but what's, what's the number? Is, is it a percentage? Is it whatever? So those kinda things are being wildly discussed. And I, to me, they're becoming very more comfortable than just, than just a number, a hard number from 10 to whatever. Church is the same. Churches could take their capacity and come up with a percent. And maybe there's a, maybe there's a, a cap originally that we would take information from. A church that holds 1,500, you take, you know, 30% of that is still 500 or whatever. You know, I'm not sure we wanna do 500 gathering stuff. Especially, I've talked to Susie Santo a lot about, about big gatherings at the Hyatt. Those, those should not be on the table for big public gatherings, from my perspective. So anyway, I've said a lot. There was a lot going on. David Dennis and I were supposed to be on two calls and then I, I missed both of them because of all this that was going on. So I apologize for that, Commissioner. So, but that's kind of a, a thought that we convene quickly, convene a Friday key group, convene maybe a special meeting Monday, see where we're at. And we still have Wednesday to, and, and include Dr. Minns. I'm glad that you're speaking with Dr. Minns. I'm not sure, I haven't talked to him directly, so I'm not sure where he fits in on that. I'm kinda comforted that they're all, the doc, that the health professionals are communicating in the large counties and the state. My personal feeling, Adrian, is that I wanna make sure that, I think you're hearing from all of us that, that there's a mood that, that we wanna really have a, some input on what, what do we do locally? But if the doctors are, if they're saying, this is the facts and we can't go there, we have to go there, I, I have a lot of respect for that as well. But I think it's important for us to be able to have enough information where we're saying, as policymakers, that we're, we're comfortable recommending this if, or that, stuff like that. Okay, that's about as long as I've ever talked at one of these meetings, so I apologize. Yes.
So, I guess the thing that kind of comes to my mind when we talk about making these decisions as a community. I mean, we had multiple meetings scheduled for the Riverfront Legacy Master Plan. We had, and we sought public input for buildings. When we talk about key people, every single person in this community is a key person.
Recognize that.
And I wonder, how can we, how can we get to every single person in this community? If we're gonna talk about how people feel about how this should be handled, in my opinion, and take it for what it's worth, but I think it's important that we, we try to reach as many people as possible when making this decision.
I, I'm, I'm with you on that. We could set up a poll or something. But what I'm talking about is the key people that, that run these operations, nonprofit churches, businesses. That input i- is valuable from the citizens. But as we saw even yesterday at the city council meeting, that, when you just open it up for, for people to debate those things. We then all sudden, and I don't know the level of, I respect the opinion. I don't know the level of confidence I would have in, in the John Does that, that I don't know personally. I can't, I don't know that I can, and I don't know that, that some people will be engaged that just say, hey, I wanna trust the experts and the owners and you as a commission. So, but I'm okay if you wanna do kind of a, a poll of people, but...
Well, I mean, there, there really are no winners here. I mean, there's absolutely, none of us on this board, I think, in this room, in this city, in this county, I mean, there's really no winners. We, I mean, I personally don't have a stake in this game other than to help people be well and to save lives. I mean, I really, the, the thing I think that's the most important is that, you know, you, you talk about a poll, I did conduct a poll. And what it showed me is that, you know, we kinda, if, if we don't allow ourselves to get out of our circles, we're gonna hear the same kinds of things from the people that we surround ourselves with. And I, I just think it's really important that we all take into consideration that we have too many things really to consider. We're in an overload of information. Really, it, it really is overwhelming. Would you guys agree with that? The amount of information that's coming through, the, the type of information that's coming through, I think that we just have to be really, really cognizant of where we're getting our information and then what do we take into consideration as policymakers? The other thing is like remaining professional. You know, I mean, I think that it's important, you know, how do we manage our relationships with this? I mean, when I talk to, I have people constantly telling me stories about their, their testing fiascos, right? Or I'm sorry to use that word, but some of it has been like that for folks. You know, the, the nurse that her and her husband put a plan together for how she's going to come home with her equipment, like she has to put it in a bag. And, you know, they have a strict regimen about how they're not going to infect their family. You know, that's, I guess that's my main concern, is that we really consider every single person in this community. Because to me, it's heartbreaking when I hear of folks who are really affected by this. I mean, when it comes down to, Commissioner O'Donnell mentioned domestic violence, I get that. I understand that we have a lot of things to consider, all the children in this community. I mean, the health of the community in, in the sense of the physical health or mental health. I mean, I, I really wanna hear from everybody and I don't wanna be in a bubble of, I mean, which is why I think that it would be good to consider. I think if we're gonna take the public's opinion on erecting a building, then why wouldn't we take the public's opinion for the public health of our community to ensure the safety of everyone? Do people wanna wear masks? Should we enforce that? Is that something, I mean, if that's been proven to slow the spread, is that something that we could consider too? I mean, mandatory wearing of masks? I mean, I don't know. I'm, I'm not saying, I'm not suggesting that. But I'm, I mean, these are things that we have to consider in addition. The other thing with this is, is if, if we're supposed to slow a 14-day spread, well, when is 14 days from today? That's after May 3rd.
Right.
So I mean, I, I think, I'm not saying I have all the answers. I mean, these, these are the, these are the, the decisions that we're tasked with. And I think it's important for us to consider every single voice.
All right. Well, that's what I, it's, it's, it's preparing. My mind, I, I can't wait till the last minute and then make an overnight decision. I think we need to be prepared. We can always back off. We can always back off. I just wanna be prepared. And I wouldn't, if, if I wouldn't have had these conversations, I would have never even known the idea of a percent of occupancy or percent of square foot versus a hard number. Those are the kinda conversations that are incredibly valuable with people that are running their operations, retail, nail salons. You know, a small nail salon may only be able to have two customers a time. And with, with gear, they're already wearing masks and gear, those kinda things. That's the feedback that, that I personally need to hear in. So, and I just wanna be prepared. And so, and I just want to be prepared.
And Mr. Chairman, I think that's the point. We're not experts in all these fields, and that's why you're relying on that. And people elected us to make tough decisions and to rely on advice from experts and not just internally decide what's best for the community. And going out to these groups, whether it's a chamber, whether it's the Kansas Restaurant Hospitality Association, one of these trade groups or one of these organizations, they are the experts. And that's who, it doesn't matter if you're a county commissioner, a city council, state legislature, US Congress, you rely on them. So I don't mind getting back feedback. I try to do Facebook Lives and get out and get as much feedback as possible at the end of the day. But we were elected to make these tough decisions. And erecting a building to be the next 50 years a civic center, that does require far more public input than saying, when does the Board of Health decide when to reopen our economy? Because that's what we were tasked to do. So that's what I think the difference is. And I'm glad you're already on top of it, Mr. Chairman, and looking at who you would rely on in all the different industries to start getting this economy open in a common sense, safe manner. And I think that's what's most important for everyone out there to realize that this isn't going to be haphazard, knee-jerk, or just reckless. It's going to be very well-thought-out and smart. So, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to echo some of the comments that you already stated. But I'd like to maybe take a little bit further first to chew on some ideas between now and our next meeting when we talk about this again. But this idea of essential versus non-essential, I think, has been a misnomer from the very beginning. The reality is what we're talking about is high risk versus some risk versus little to no risk. And so we talk about outdoor activities, like when you're out, say, fishing by yourself, for example. I would say there's no risk. If you are at a concert, at a bankering, it'd be high risk. So there's a spectrum of risk ought to be our thought rather than this idea of essential and non-essential. We had over 20 exemptions, if you will, on our list and got criticized from the very beginning on a stay-at-home order. We never really meant stay-at-home. What we really meant was mitigate risk. And I think that we, as we continue this discussion, I do agree that this idea that we have a stay-at-home order and people are doing activities is really not the problem. Is, are they doing things that are low risk? Then it should be fine.
And I think most people.
Absolutely.
I think the message is out there too.
So you know, I went to some of the big box stores and to Commissioner Dennis's point. You know, I think one of the challenges we have right now is when a lot of businesses are closed, people are going to go to the one place that's open. So in some ways, that well-intentioned order actually is probably making that worse. So if you really want to limit, you know, reduce the number of people at the big box store, maybe provide some competition out there in the community. People are still going to go out there and do some things, and so.
Yeah, the stay-at-home order does identify essential and non-essential. So if the stay-at-home order by itself goes away, then essential, non-essential goes away with it.
I just think the whole thing is a misnomer. We should never use those phrases. Those are not the right ideas. We never really meant stay-at-home. We never really, we should have never classified something as essential and non-essential. It's always been about risk, and a risk is understandable. And even if we do back these orders off a little bit, the idea that social distancing is a thing and that people ought to be careful about how they, you know, shaking of hands, for example, breathing on other people, wearing masks potentially, you know, doing things that are smart to mitigate the risk of virus transmission, those are smart things, aren't going to go away. Even if we lift these orders today, people are going to, people will continue to do those smart things. Even though I was in the big box store, I witnessed inside this store, again, I would say 10% of the people wearing masks is probably about right. But I know some people weren't standing right next to each other, unless they're maybe a married couple. But people are being very respectful of other people's personal space. And even inside those stores, there's been a lot of very careful thought by people who are trying to get some things done that to them is essential, but it hasn't, you know, they're not just disregarding all thought. They're being very careful to the extent that they can be in a space like that. But the reality is, as we talk about this going forward, I hope that the state and the county will start using things about, you know, start focusing on risk rather than what activity can you do? Or what activity is prohibited? Because it all comes down to risk. There's maybe an office that has a few people working in the office, maybe more than 10. But maybe there's distant, you know, they're far apart. It shouldn't matter in that case. It all comes down to risk. Even a restaurant, for example, if they have nothing on the table and they sit people far apart inside the restaurant, maybe, you know, married couples at this table and 10 feet, you know, 15 feet away is another married couple or whatever it would be, people who are, you know, living in the same location, the risk is very low. And they can wipe those surfaces down between customers, for example. So that restaurant should be able to get back to providing some type of service, I would think. The reality is, we're talking about risk. And so the idea of using the word essential and non-essential or the word stay-at-home order have always been, my opinion, poor descriptions of what we've been trying to accomplish. And so that's just something for us to talk about or say, think about as we go into our next discussion about gathering limits. And I do, and Chairman, I do agree that, you know, a small restaurant, if you base this on square footage is a lot smarter than it would be if you simply look at square footage. And I agree with that idea as well. Thank you.
Commissioner.
Thank you. Well, first of all, you brought up a number of things which were great. I appreciate that. If there is some kind of a meeting with the leaders in the community on Friday, somehow the Board of Health needs to be in that. So I don't know if you need to work with Mr. Papoun or whatever to get the Board of Health. If we're going to make a decision that's monumental, we need all the data that we can have so that we're all very knowledgeable of what goes forward. I also like the chairman's idea of sooner rather than later. I don't think that we want to wait until next Wednesday to start making decisions. We need, if we need a special meeting Monday, I'm all for that. I liked a couple of things that Commissioner O'Donnell said. He said, "common sense and safe." Common sense goes back to things like having our businesses decide on square footage or what we can do. This is common sense. We work with businesses in order to find out what they need. Because I can tell you for a fact that there is no business ever going to want to be identified as a cluster. That's going to kill that business right there. So I think every single one of them are going to be going out of their way to make sure that they are never identified as a cluster. So we need, I believe in free enterprise. We need to say, hey, these are kind of our guidelines. You need to figure out how that you can open your business safely. And that was the second portion of Commissioner O'Donnell's statement, the safe portion of that. We need to rely on the experts in that, and that's our medical community, our health department, Dr. Menz and the other medical providers here in Sedgwick County. So as we've come down to the point where we have to make a decision, common sense and safety are paramount. Making sure that we can open the businesses safely is critical. But we need the information sooner rather than later. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Healthy comments, so to speak. So Adrian, thanks. Unless there's any other questions. Thank you, Commissioners, for a very valuable discussion.
Do we need a motion to have a special meeting on Friday and maybe a special meeting Monday? Or do we need to move forward?
I think I'm at liberty to call that as the chair or the majority. So can we wait how the rest of the day and tomorrow goes? If we can call one.
I might just jump in, Chairman, just listening to the conversation. I agree with Commissioner Dennis on the Friday Zoom meeting that it ought to be considered a public meeting. All five of you can take part and make comment. There's limitations on how many can participate in Zoom. We'll have to research that, see who the host of that's going to be. And then you may have to, I know our group yesterday routinely gets above 40. I don't know that we're going to be able to host that many. So it may be an invite only as far as participation, but maybe the public could watch it or we'll stream it somehow to make it available. But if that's the will of the commission moving forward, I guess I'd like to be able to plan for that. And then we could make the call on the special meeting Monday after that.
I'm guessing that, in my mind, that there's about 10 to 15 participants of opinions from various entities. And then us.
We would just need to flesh that out so we know who to invite and how to organize that meeting.
And Mr. Chairman, if I could, my Boone County Councilor, we need to make sure that that group understands that that's going to be a public meeting.
Sure.
And streamed and that all of you would be participating.
Right.
And some of these meetings aren't, that isn't the expectation, so.
Yeah, some of the, I agree. But some of these meetings we're on, I don't, some of the comments that I've been in dialogue, I'm not sure that these people would be objecting to have the public know and the media. Would you agree, Tom? I mean, that's, there's really not a lot of secrets going on. There's confidential information with our meetings with the.
It's just easier, it's easier for us tactically if we just call it a public meeting.
Right.
And that way, all five of you clearly can participate. All five of you can comment. It just, we just need to know who the audience is going to be.
Okay. We will proceed. So do we have to receive and file on, or is that discussion relief?
Bill moved. Second.
Be in motion and a second for, that was item C, right?
Yes.
Yes. Item C. Any other comments being done? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item D, Discussion of the Coronavirus Aid, Relief and Economic Security Act.
Chairman and Commissioners, Tom Stoles, County Manager, again, just to kind of set the table for item D. Yesterday at staff, we had a short discussion regarding all three federal stimulus packages designed to help our workforce and community get through the COVID pandemic. And I think recently, there was a 3.5 approved yesterday afternoon. The third package of this group of stimulus packages is known as Coronavirus Aid, Relief and Economic Securities Act. We call it by the acronym CARES. And has the potential to bring a considerable financial resource directly to Sedgwick County to help offset costs associated with fighting the current pandemic between now and the end of the year. The goal of this meeting is to hear summaries of Kevin Stamper, who's with our county legal department, and Lindsey Poe Rousseau, who is our chief financial officer. And both of them are members of what we have called the Federal Stimulus Review Team within Sedgwick County. It's an ad hoc group that we stood up about three weeks ago. Includes eight people, county staff people, mostly finance and legal. And we've added, we're going to try to add a grant writer to that, contracted grant writer to assist with that. And we're also going to sign a contract with Disaster Recovery Services, hopefully to give us an outside perspective on how we try to negotiate all these federal dollars from FEMA all the way to these three plans. So we'll hear a summary from Kevin and Lindsey. And then after they're done, I'd like you to consider and hear from me a potential accountability and management model that I'll present for discussion. It is very rough and only a draft, and I would like input in that. And then give us a decision at the end of the discussion on how you'd like to proceed. So that's kind of the preface of this. And with that, is it Kevin or who's up first? Kevin?
Okay. Kevin, welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kevin Stamper, Assistant County Counselor. I apologize, some of this is going to be a little repetitive of yesterday, but in order to put it out there in the public forum, we kind of wanted to go over some of those factors again. There have been three bills that have been passed. There's a fourth bill that's being referred to as 3.5 that cleared the Senate yesterday. And the House Representatives is supposed to take that up potentially tomorrow and may take a vote either tomorrow or Friday. But going in order of the bills, the first one dealt mainly with providing additional assistance for testing and things of that nature. They basically provided for about $6.7 billion for enhanced testing. And there were some grants that were available for us to go ahead and apply for as far as, you know, our public health services and that sort of thing. The second act is the Families First Coronavirus Response Act. And the reason for that bill basically was to provide additional emergency family medical leave. There were some other issues that were also incorporated into that bill, such as a waiver for most health insurance plans of any co-pays or deductibles related to COVID expenses. So there also was some money that we were eligible for as a county due to grants for, K-Dads has put up a grant program for public assistance, funding for the Meals on Wheels and elderly food. The third one is the Coronavirus Aid, Relief and Economic Security Act. That was signed into law on March 27th. The bill mainly includes Title V funding. That is the bulk share of what the bill is. And the money goes to all 50 states, the District of Columbia, and the territories. Kansas is going to get 1.3 billion, or 1.03 billion dollars. Johnson County gets about $116 million, and Sedgwick County is going to get 99.6 million. These funds are for the necessary COVID-related expenditures that we incur between March 1 and December 31, 2020. But those expenses can't have been accounted for in the latest budget cycle. And we are going to be tracked in our spending. It's going to be subject to an inspector general review. And we have to repay the money at the end of the year if it is not used or there's some discussion by the inspector general that maybe it was not used as a proper purpose. However, the definition is pretty wide in terms of what is a COVID-related response. So we can take that into account. We can use it for some public works matters. We could use it to purchase new equipment that maybe wasn't contained in the last budget cycle, but we have some EMS equipment maybe that's wearing out. We could use it to replace that. It's a pretty broad definition. But we're going to be responsible for those dollars, whether we keep them here in the county or we start to disperse those among the other municipalities. There's going to be some new guidance published on Friday, the 24th. So that could establish some more guidelines in terms of the use. But we're not exactly sure what those would be at this point. We cannot use those funds to replace or offset lost tax revenues for sales tax, the hotel residential use tax, that sort of thing. But the bill also did include some other pools of money that we're looking at. There's going to be a 20% increase in the Medicare reimbursement rate and $5 billion to senior citizens and homeless. There's $850 million that was given to the Department of Justice to aid local law enforcement. And that's going to be given out on a grant basis. So we are looking into whether we need to be applying for those. There were $1.5 billion to HHS for the purposes of purchasing, renting, leasing, or building new facilities for treatment across the country. And there's a $400 million inclusion in the bill for election security. That's going to be a pass-through from the Secretary of State's office, and we're looking into what we need to do on that. There was also some enhanced FEMA money. So what we're going to be able to do is apply for that FEMA money, and that could be used to offset other areas so we wouldn't have to expend the CARES money on that. Now, what's in the future? The 3.5 bill passed the Senate yesterday. That's a $484, or $84 billion bill. Most of that funding is going to the Paycheck Protection Program. But there's about $100 billion that's going to be given to hospitals for shoring up their resources. And the Phase 4 bill was under discussion. That may include some state and local relief for the replacement of income or sales tax revenue or the other losses that we might sustain. So that's kind of the legislative end of these things. And I'm going to turn it over to Lindsey.
That's good information. Thanks again for, it's good to hear it twice. Interesting that election enhancements, that could be helpful for us. Even new buildings, possibly.
Great. Good morning, Commissioners. Lindsey Poe Rousseau, your CFO. So you got a note yesterday explaining some of this information, but I'm going to provide you some updated details this morning. So I'm going to focus primarily on that CARES Act, the 99.6 million. Again, because we do expect that money to come in anytime now. Our revenue manager did check this morning just about nine o'clock. The money is not here yet. We are anxiously awaiting it, and we do have a plan to receive it when it comes. And I think Tom will get into the. And I think Tom will get into the details of that here in a moment. But we do plan to use that to reimburse costs associated with COVID-19 that we have incurred thus far, although we will use several resources, the grant writer Kevin mentioned, and I think Tom mentioned, as well as the Disaster Recovery Services, sorry, excuse me, to help us understand how to maximize FEMA funding, as well as how to then balance and offset those costs with the CARES Act funding that we can get. As Kevin said, it's really important to note that anything that would have been included in the 2020 budget is not eligible for reimbursement. And so we have set up a separate fund center that you all authorized a month or so ago. We have had some budget transfers there, about a million dollars worth for now. To date, as of this morning, we have spent, or you have authorized, spending of $848,946. And so that includes expenses that may have been borne by the Fire District or Sedgwick County. It includes the COVID stipend that went to our frontline and rear-facing folks for both pay periods, what we anticipate those costs to be for the next time. We have some information from Corrections and Registered Deeds and Facilities also that we've included. So lots of work that has gone on. Yes, sir.
Would that, would that include any, did we do some relief to the Clearwater issue that we had? Or is that, is that eligible to help support?
It would depend on the nature of the expense as of right now. I haven't seen anything come through that was directly related to that. But certainly the supplies that had been ordered, if those were utilized by EMS, then yes, absolutely, that would be reimbursed.
But that's not part of the 848 to date? Yeah.
It may have been if they used some of the supplies that we had ordered.
Okay.
But I, we'd have to dig into that, and I can follow up on that for you.
Thank you.
So that is where we stand with spending today. We do know that as you all contemplate reopening the facilities across the county, there's going to be costs associated with that. There will probably be enhanced cleaning. We'll probably need to put in some screens and things like that at reception areas. Kevin already mentioned the EMS equipment. That's maybe getting a little outdated. Certainly, you know, we've heard that maybe in the fall or winter, there could be another spike as everybody gets back to school and flu season comes around. So this is, this is money for the long haul. These dollars are eligible to be reimbursed all the way through December 31st. And so that's why I think even when we get these dollars, we don't necessarily need to aim to spend all of them right now. We definitely want to hold some back so that we can make sure we can manage throughout this crisis. And I know Tanya Cole has already stood up a group that is going to be looking at what will be necessary to get those facilities set up. And so I'm sure we'll come back to you with updates on that and potential expenditure requests, especially as we get back to more normal business. So those are the details I have for you on how we, at least for the moment, plan to utilize those CARES, what we're calling Title V dollars. It is an 880-page law. So there's lots to know and lots to look through on there. So we'll be learning a lot more, and we're really excited about the opportunity to have a grant writer to help us identify those opportunities and then make sure we get our applications in in a timely fashion and get every dollar we possibly can for our community.
Questions for Lindsey or Kevin?
That's good, good information. So anybody got any questions?
I have a quick question, Chairman. Thank you. So just to be clear, I had a, I had a question from Park City as far as, you know, people can't, shutting off utilities, that kind of thing. The city's kind of having to fit the bill for that. And so if you could just reiterate again, the money that we're getting isn't necessarily available for municipalities yet, or that's, that's the Act Four.
So what you're talking about probably impacts them in terms of lost revenues. And so to the extent that there is a request from local governments to replace lost revenue, there is no provision for that for any government in place in federal law right now. That could hopefully come about through that, I guess, stimulus bill four that we've talked about. The President has tweeted his support for that. Hopefully, that translates to some congressional support. Certainly, I think we've provided some estimates to you all. It's going to hit us too. It will hit every community. And right now, the impetus for that money is that it go to all local governments, not to the state as a pass-through necessarily, but just directly to each unit. Because right now, that 1.0 million that, or billion, excuse me, that Kevin referenced earlier, there's no rules or procedure in place right now at the state level for how that will be disseminated. Likewise, if Johnson County or Sedgwick County, if the commissions opt to include those other local governments within their boundaries, we don't yet have a process for that. And I think Tom will get to that later in the discussion. Does that answer your question?
Yes. Thank you.
Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Kevin was going through the list of different things that we could apply for, grants and so forth, in addition to this money. And he talked about homelessness and things along that line. One of the issues that we've been working ever since I've been on the commission and even before that was this behavioral health. We formed a coalition. We signed a couple people to work behavioral health. We got now to a point, and we just can't go any further because we don't have any money to do the next step. And if the next step is to take a look at something like San Antonio has, that's a big hurdle. And it kind of fits in, in my opinion, especially with what Kevin Stamper told us, with some of the different grants that we can get and some of the ways we can use this funding. Can we start using some of this to move this coalition forward with the next step? And the next step truly is a facility and staffing and so forth for that. So that's really my request, is how do we use this to help the community that's most in need? And they are, our folks that are most in need are the ones from behavioral health.
So if I could just speak to that, because I do serve on the Mental Health and Substance Abuse Coalition. We had a meeting, and quite frankly, as with everything in our community right now, it's kind of on hold because of everybody's efforts diverted in other directions. I will say that the Continuum of Care had a meeting yesterday. There are, there's an incredible group of folks that are doing pretty much everything in their power to ensure that the most vulnerable in our community are getting the services that they need. Do I agree that we need to still stay focused on helping folks and moving the Mental Health and Substance Abuse Coalition forward? Absolutely. But quite frankly, at this point, it's time, I mean, just like with our budget talks, right? We haven't, we're supposed to be doing everything as business as usual, but we don't. We can't do that. And so I, I just kind of wanted to give you an update as far as what we're having, the conversations that I've been having, because, you know, moving, moving the ball forward with things that we would have normally been doing has kind of stalled, just quite frankly, because of what's happening right now. Are people still focused on that? I mean, do they still want to get it done? Absolutely. But that's, that's kind of where we're at, right at this point in, in time.
I understand. But wouldn't you agree that one of the biggest hurdles we have moved forward is the funding to get something in place permanently to be able to help these folks?
Absolutely. Just giving you an update, Commissioner Dennis.
So if our biggest hurdle is funding, and there are different bills and different things that are happening, that we can tap into that funding to get this thing moving forward.
Yeah.
We need to get Joan Tammany and all of her folks working with, with our, the rest of our staff to move this forward.
Which is the reason why I have been asking for a grant writer since I started a year ago. So I'm glad that that's in place now that this has happened.
Chairman, may I just add one thing? Sorry, to address your question. So in that CARES Act, there was actually $425 million provided to increase access to mental health services for health clinics, suicide prevention programs, and emergency response spending. So hopefully, that grant writer will be able to assist us in pursuing that line of funding to do exactly that.
Good. Thank you for that information.
Thank you.
Okay. Tom?
Back to you.
And while Kevin and Lindsey are still in the room, and just to get back to Commissioner Dennis's point, I think it's going to be a very interesting time for us to look at the CARES money and all of this ancillary federal dollar swirling to determine what we can use to basically fight COVID. And, and we all know that mental health is going to be taxed because of the pandemic. It's already happening out there. So I think it's, all of that is open for analysis and discussion. I guess, so today, we have this potential money coming in. Kevin and Lindsey and I have visited a lot over the last week about a way to be responsible and accountable and to manage this. All we've done to date, Lindsey has created a, a holding place within county finance to when we get an allocation from the Fed, it will have a place to rest. That's really about all we've done today. Everything else that I'm going to talk about from this point forward is all speculation and plan. We feel like because of the importance of this money and the amount of this money and the responsibility of this money that's laid on this county because of the rules of the CARE Act, that we need a multi-layered accountability and litmus on how we move forward. So we are, I would recommend we think about this and maybe discuss this a bit today. First of all, you have, as I mentioned already, a federal stimulus review team within the county already up on operational. That becomes the first layer of, of this money. How it is, what the rules are, what we can spend it on, what we can't spend it on, that becomes the first layer. I would suggest we create a second layer, which is, and you can call this anything you want, a, I think we've named it a Expenditure Approval Task Force. And that would be made up of a variety of people. Some county staff, Lindsey is recommending two county staff, two City of Wichita staff, a representative of Class II and III cities, an outside person who is an accountant or CPA by trade, and an outside business person. So that's an eight-team group. And this is just a recommendation at this time. Lindsey and Kevin would be, and one of our internal auditors, would be staff assigned to that group, not as a voter or a decider, but as a resource to ask questions to and to bounce things off of, as we do with other types of advisory board. So the money moves from a holding place to a spending place, looked at by preliminary staff, moves forward, is looked at by this external expenditure approval group, and then comes before the people, which you represent. And piecemealing that all together in a timely sequence is doable. And I would like some direction from you on, on how that would work. But the vision would be, as we go week to week, this task force would meet weekly, preferably on a Monday or Tuesday before our Wednesday meeting. Look at all of the potential expenses on how this money is being asked to be spent. Give an opinion of that. And in some cases, with your authority, maybe even approve expense of that. And then a whole bag comes to the commission on Wednesday meetings, and we'll make it actually part of the agenda. Be right at the beginning of public meeting, it'd be a CARES or a finance report every week that you would see. And we could take that to whatever detail you want it to be. It could be a global overview. It could be a detailed line item by line on what we're talking about spending. But that's kind of our, Kevin and Lindsey and I's vision moving forward on this. And then at the end of that, even after the people make a decision on how to spend that money and when to spend that money, there is an auditing functionality that we would hire in externally to watch the process, to make sure we follow all the rules. So essentially, we've set up four layers of protection to make sure we're doing the right thing, being accountable, and not making any mistakes as we negotiate through now to the end of the year. So that's kind of a proposal we have out there. It was the brainchild of mostly Kevin and Lindsey, just kind of hung along for it. But that's kind of what we're throwing out. I'd be anxious to hear any comments or any corrections, course corrections to that.
Well, I'll come in originally. I think it's a great, it looks like it's a lot of checks and balances, especially the final, if it's an external auditor that we have on contract anyway.
If we can, we would, we would work that out.
And so this report that we would get weekly would say, there's going to be a lot of, my assumption is going to be, there's going to be a lot of blocking and tackling, overtime pay, blah, blah, blah. But then also, you could say, hey, this is on the horizon. We've heard from the City of Wichita Police or some, or EMS has got things, or maybe we get, maybe there's potentially an expansion of a comm care facility or whatever. So you could tell us, these would, these are happening right now. They're routine, special expense, and on the horizon. So, yeah, sounds, sounds good to me. Comments? Yeah, David?
No, I appreciate the thought that's gone into this so far. Because of the fact that the county is ultimately responsible if we screw this up, the step that you have to take it to before the Board of County Commissioners is, I think, crucial for approval, because if we're going to be responsible at the end, and we're going to have to come up with the money if we, if we have to pay anything back, we need to be in the approval process someplace. So much like a bid board that we've got, as things come up for us on the bid board, I foresee this working the same way. So I think you're on the exact right track.
You need a motion to approve this concept?
Well, what I'd like to do today is the commission do two things. First of all, agree that this is a good idea, take this money. You've not had the opportunity to do that yet. Alls we've done is create a placeholder for it, and I signed a piece of paper last week saying, hey, we'd be very interested in this, federal government, if you would give it to us.
So we put it on the agenda next week?
So today, I think you should approve, or at least bring to a vote, the commission approval of this moving forward. And then I would ask that you would just instruct staff to go and, if you like the concept of this four-layer approach, we will flesh that in the next week, bring it back to you next week to actually vote on that at that time. Lindsey, anything else?
I think from our perspective, one of the things that's really important for us to know is that when those dollars come in, we're allowed to accept it. And so if we could have at least a commission action today to say, yes, it's acceptable to accept that. And then I think we had talked about trying to establish some budget authority and all that. But if we need to bring that through as a separate agenda item to next week's agenda, I completely understand however you all want to proceed.
So you're looking for a motion to accept the funds today?
Yes, please.
So a motion to accept funds?
Yes, please.
Second? Been motion a second to accept the CARES funds? Any other comments? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Okay. And then we would, do we need a, I mean, I'd be glad to make a motion that you bring back a, this four-tiered plan formally at the next commission meeting?
That would be helpful.
Okay. There's a motion and a second for a more formalized plan for next week? Any other comments? Okay. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, is there, the next item? We ready for the next item? Yes.
Item E, Discussion Regarding Property Taxes.
Mr. Mike Papoun, County Counselor, we may wait just a couple of minutes. Our Deputy CFO Brent Shelton was going to call in and participate if needed. Our Treasurer Lynda Kazire, I think, is going to also participate. And I also invited Karen Bailey, Deputy County Clerk, to be part of this. And of course, we have our CFO Lindsey Poe Rousseau here too as well. So giving, giving these people a few minutes, I can go into a little bit of a background. Last week, we had the first discussion on the issue of whether the county commission should defer interest on the second half tax payments this year due May 11th. A motion was made by Commissioner Howell to waive this for 60 days. I will, I will point out, though, there were no specifics in the motion, what this waiver would include, whether it be just commercial property or just individual properties, whether it include homesteads or also commercial individuals with landlords and such. But it was just a general waiver of interest for 60 days. Commissioner Dennis made a substitute motion to defer this for one week and get some more input from governments. Since that time, I've had a chance to talk to several of the lawyers representing some of these units of government, and gotten some of their feedback. Had a chance to leave a voice message, having had a chance to talk to the governor's chief counsel, Clay Britton, but let him know that county commission was considering this, just so that he would be aware. I think one of the County Commission was considering this, just so that he would be aware. I think one of the issues here, and I hope, I hope our County Treasurer is listening, is that we have an Attorney General's opinion in 2007, which specifically prohibits County Treasurer from waiving, waiving taxes and including in that opinion that taxes and interest are one in the, one in the same. So, I'm sure that that, that concerns our County Treasurer and is part of the reason that she has opposed this. And since that time, we've also looked at, Brent Shelton has looked at what kind of mechanism we have in terms of programming and such to allow the Treasurer to even do this without it getting into the manual process that she was talking about last week. According to Mr. Shelton, there's no way to program this system that we have right now to only include certain taxes, whatever this, this board would include waiving, and that it would have to include every tax, unpaid tax account. So, a, a programmatic change like that, that would make it easier for the Treasurer's office just to waive interest for 60 days, would include everybody, the escrow accounts, commercial properties, everybody. The other problem, so, in effect, what Mr. Shelton was saying, and he can weigh in at any time if you have more, want more specific information, what Mr. Shelton is saying is basically what the Treasurer would have to do is after 60 days, go back and manually waive this interest once the, before posting the taxpayer's payment into the system. And, and that, of course, would, I think, create a lot of work for the County, County Treasurer. Options, some of the options you can talk about today, obviously, you could proceed as the motion was last week, or some of the other options is we could get another Attorney General's opinion, our office could request it. The Attorney General in 2007 was Paul Morrison. Of course, Attorney General Derek Schmidt is the Attorney General right now. His office may have a differing, differing view of some of the legal analysis that was in that opinion. We can contact the Governor's Office if you would like, we can contact legislative leaders. All of these options are on the table. And, and I know you've received correspondence from various groups, South Central Kansas Realtors and CCIM Institute, sent something, I know to the chairman recently, all encouraging you to take this action, but none of these correspondence have I seen a legal basis for you to do it without potentially causing some legal, legal problems for this board and the County Treasurer. As that, so I'll wrap up my comments with that, so.
Okay. Thank you. Well, you took care of my announcement that I had ex parte communications on this. I think we all did to a certain extent. So, I'm on record that, yes, I've received numerous ex parte information. I assume the whole commission has, so we don't have to go through any formal acknowledgement. They've all shaken their heads that they've received ex parte information. Okay, with that, what is the, I'll defer to Commissioner Howell or Commissioner O'Donnell, that's it?
Thank you. So, that prohibition that you referenced, Mr. Papoun, that you talked about, I assume that would be that the Treasurer would, it was contemplated there is that the Treasurer would not have the authority independently to make that decision to waive interest. And I'm just curious if the governing board of the county would have different authority than the, than the Treasurer?
Well, that, Commissioner Howell, that is something that we would want to ask the Attorney General as far, as far as a distinguishing factor that, that they might look at. As you're aware, we have had an attorney that represent County, County Treasurer indicate that under a limited circumstance, and this was a 2013 opinion, that the County Commission might have some home rule authority to do such. But, as I've told you, I think it's, it's much safer in this respect to get a second opinion or, rather than just take this course of action on our own. And even if the board did this, the County Treasurer's not under any obligation to follow this board's direction.
Okay. I don't, I don't mind taking the time to get an AG opinion if that, if they would be able to respond to that fairly quickly. If they're not going to respond quickly, then I guess we're going to need to make a decision on our own. But I don't mind getting some clarification. What I see right now is there seems to be some ambiguity in different opinions of lawyers, that some people say you can do this on a limited basis, some say you can't do it at all. I would say that if we are going to do this, this would be a limited basis. We're only talking about this one time for a short time. And I, my caveat last week was, would, would be that you had to be current on your taxes, be qualified for this. We're not, we're not clear on whether or not that, that interest, interest would come back if you went beyond 60, 60 days or not. That was not clarified. But I guess my real question is, are we, are we, do we have the authority on a limited basis in this case to waive the interest? And by the way, this only impacts Sedgwick County. As was mentioned last week, this interest is something that Sedgwick County retains. It is not something that goes to taxing subdivisions. So, there's going to be some delinquencies, no question. There always is some delinquencies regardless. But this particular time, May the 11th is a due date, I anticipate we'll see additional delinquencies because people just don't have the money because of what they're dealing with on a very personal basis. And so, the question is, if we don't do anything at all, I think we're still going to see some, you know, delinquencies and probably additional, more than usual. But I'll tell you what, I, I think this is a very small thing we can do. I, I don't mind taking time to ask the AG, but I think we ought to be trying to do what we can. And in referencing all the other things we talked about last week, this is probably the least thing we can do. There's other things I would rather do, but I clearly don't have the authority, and there's other ideas.
Opinion. I completely respect that. We only have so much that we are statutorily allowed to do. I understand our limits on that. It would be nice to try to help people. There's so much going on. And what we need to remember as elected officials, this money is not our money. The money belongs to the taxpayers, to the citizens of Sedgwick County. It does not belong to Sedgwick County, City of Wichita, the USC 259 or whoever. This, this money belongs to the individuals that reside within Sedgwick County. So, as long as we keep that in mind, and we make sure that we're asking Derek Schmidt to let people hold on to their money a little bit longer if they need to buy food or diapers or put gasoline in their car, that there are expenses that are far more important than taxes for the people we represent. And if your, if your choices are getting your prescription or getting your, or paying your tax bill, I certainly hope people are buying their prescriptions or buying groceries for their kids before they're paying my salary or anyone else's salary. So, that, that's my goal. So, I'm, if Commissioner Howell wants to make a motion to ask the Attorney General for an opinion, I'll be happy to second that, and then we can wait and see what happens from there. Thank you.
I have a few questions. So, Commissioner Howell, you said it would be considered on a limited basis for those who qualify. What are the qualifications?
That's actually not what I said. Thank you for the question. What I'm saying is that limited basis would be that.
You said for those who qualify.
That's not what I said.
So, yes, okay. Well, we can, we can go back and look at the tape that was reported.
Let me clarify what I do, what I do mean by this. Is that anybody, anybody who, that needs to be late this time because they don't have the money, they make a, make a decision they don't have money to pay the payment, we're going to simply accept the fact that 60 days is, 60 days will not have interest. They can make that choice.
Is there an application? I mean, how do, how do we, how do we understand who, who can and can't pay? Because, I mean, there will be people who will take advantage of this.
No question.
And so, I, I get it. Okay. So, can we, can we understand what the impact of waiving these interests would be? Can someone, can someone answer that question?
Well, in layman's terms, the impact would be that the county collects the interest and on any late payment, and the county keeps that money. Does that end up going to the general fund? So, the impact, it would be the county has a, a group of monies that are interest late payments that the county collects, even though we're only 24% of the, of the total revenue. So, we do not disperse back any of the late money to the taxing agencies as just stays with the county. So, we'd be waiving, the impact would be we would be waiving our interest, or Lindsey?
I think Lindsey has something that she'd like to say. Would you mind if we hear from her?
Well, I think the impact is bigger than that, though, because, for example, one of my cities, Bentley, they have to make bond payments on a large development that went in that they're paying, that had specials on. As a result of that failing, now they're still making bond payments on, on a failed district. And it's a very, very small community. And if they don't get the money on time from us, then they're, they can end up defaulting on a bond payment. So, that's a significant impact. We have to look at things like that. And I've heard from Garden Plain and, and other communities that have concerns over this. Now, one thing I want to make sure, before Lindsey answers the question, is that I don't have a problem with asking the AG. From what I understand, if we do do something with taxes and they don't agree with us, one of the penalties can be ouster. So, I'm certain that neither Commissioner Howell or Commissioner O'Donnell want to be ousted out of, out of their job because they vote to waive some taxes. So, getting an AG's opinion, I think, is probably the first step that we ought to take before that we make some kind of rash decision that can end up in ouster. But I'm sorry, I wanted to make sure that I said there is an impact to our cities.
Absolutely. I mean, I, I got a list of, of all of the, the monies that would be distributed to all of the, the cities in my area. But I'd like to hear from Lindsey, if you wouldn't mind.
Sure. So, actually, what I was going to say to Commissioner Dennis's point, or to your point, was what Commissioner Dennis said, and that is, if, if there's no interest, people probably.
Aren't going to pay.
Right. And, I mean, I, you can't necessarily blame them for that at all.
Yep.
But I think in terms of, if you were focusing on a fiscal impact, the interest on current tax that was received in 2019 was about $750,000.
Hold on. Brent, somebody mute your phone.
Somebody needs to mute their phone or finish their chips.
It's good to have humor, right? So, the revenue received in the general fund in 2019 for interest on current taxes, and again, that was with a pretty small delinquency because, you know, things were kind of rocking and rolling in 2019, was about $750,000. So, that would be the fiscal impact potentially. I mean, obviously, not all of that, but that could be the, the amount of, the magnitude of the impact.
Yeah. I mean, just to be clear, I, I understand that there are a lot of folks that are struggling, and I would love to do everything that we can do to help those folks. I, I think just saying that we're going to waive it, waive the interest for a certain amount of days without having some qualifications or some restrictions, I, I don't really feel like that's good public policy. I think that it's important for us to understand that how a government functions is by the taxes that we have. I mean, when someone calls 911, what pays for that? Our tax dollars. There's a lot of things to consider for sure. So, I mean, I think it's important that we understand exactly what we're going to be doing. If we have to get an AG opinion, let's do it. But I think it's important for us to understand really, truly what the impact is to all of it at the end of the day.
I have a question. Mike, would, would it also, if the motion is to get an AG opinion, obviously, you could write up, and we could include copies of some of that ex parte information we've received from, from, that we've shared. But would it also, does the Governor have the executive order powers to do something like that? Worth asking her as well.
Yes, I was, that's what I was hoping to get an idea from, from Mr. Britton. We could certainly send the Governor a letter too, and seeing if she had any interest in, in doing an executive order if she thought she had that authority. And I'm, and I might comment on something Commissioner Cruz brought up about impact. This impacts school districts worse than it does, I mean, there are like about 90 taxing districts. I had no idea we had so many taxing districts in this, in this county. But school districts fiscal year ends June 30th. So, they wouldn't be getting a substantial amount of money. I've only heard from the USD 259 people, but, you know, I've, I've heard them use the term devastating as far as the amount of money they might lose during this particular budget year for them. So, it could impact different taxing districts differently, just like it, it might affect a city like Bentley as differently than Goddard or something. So.
Okay. Is there a motion to consider?
I'll make a motion. I don't know if Commissioner O'Donnell wants to say anything before I do.
I think that the motion, it'd be smart to include a letter to the Governor as well when we're, when we're sending this to the Attorney General to get an opinion, asking the Governor if she'd be open to it, that, that there's at least interest from Sedgwick County.
I would like to carbon copy the legislative leadership on both House and Senate. That would be okay?
Absolutely.
Just a couple of comments. First of all, I don't know if the ouster proceedings would be something that's based on individual Commissioner on a, on a majority vote of this board. I don't know if that, that's a very interesting question in and of itself. I have read ouster decisions that have been made in the past. Usually, it's because of, I should say unethical behavior by individual commissioners that have done things that were illegal primarily. And again, this might be something that's, right now, is a little bit, a little bit dicey. We don't know if this is legal or not. That's why we're asking the Attorney General to clarify the law. But we do have opinions out there right now that are disagreeing with each other. So, I think it's prudent to get the Attorney General to speak to this, and certainly ask the legislature and the Governor to, to understand this. And if they can do anything as well, that would be very smart. Back to the, the dollars, the $750,000, that was for, that was an annual, annual revenue for late payments. Okay. We're talking about 60 days. If you just, you know, do the simple math, it's about $125,000. If it was the same rate, maybe we see some additional this year because of what's happening with, with the pandemic. But I don't think it's going to be night and day. I don't think everybody's going, not everybody's going to do this. I think most people will still pay their taxes on time. I think people in this room will probably pay their taxes on time. I know I will. The reality is, a majority of people who are out there that see a due date, they're going to pay their taxes when they're due. So, I don't think you're going to see a majority of taxpayers or something going to take this option. But for those who need the help, this is something that would be the very smallest thing we can do, is to give them some, some relief on this one thing. So, with that, I would like to make a motion. We would, we would make a request to the Attorney General to weigh in and issue an opinion on whether the Board of County Commissioners has the authority to waive interest for 60 days due to the COVID-19 pandemic. And I would like to ask, ask the, I'm sorry, ask the Governor the same question and carbon copy the leadership in the House and Senate.
Second?
For clarification, will we have to wait to hear back from all three of those entities as far as the legislature, the AG, and the, so what would be the point in sending something to the other two bodies if we're only going to listen to one?
Because the legislature has the authority as well, and they still might meet this year. We don't know what their plans are. Number two.
So, if they differ, if those two opinions differ?
They're not going to, I'm not asking for their opinion. I'm asking them to take action potentially. They have the authority to take action independently of us and to clearly authorize us if that's what they wanted to do. The, the Governor might make an executive order. She might take this on her own behalf and do this because she would have the authority potentially. And the Attorney General, of course, we need him to clarify the law. So, those are the three recipients, and.
Okay. So, another question. If, if the AG says that we should do this, and the Treasurer doesn't want to do it, will she be forced to do it? I'm asking our legal counsel in the back.
Commissioner Cruz, I, I don't think the Attorney General is going to encourage you to do one action or the other. All that he would be opining on is whether you legally had the authority to do it. And then it would just come back to this board to determine whether or not you would do it.
So, if we say we'd like to do this, would the Treasurer have to do it, I guess, is my question? And if she says no, where does that action go?
That, that would be another legal consideration. I'm not sure that this board has the authority to make the Treasurer do something if she's an independent elected official, whether this board could do that. But we would certainly look at that.
Okay. So, motion and a second. Any other comments being done?
And I assume as part of this motion, Commissioner Howell, that you authorized the Chairman to sign these letters or?
Without question, please authorize the Chairman to sign. And back to Commissioner Cruz's question, it's just one step at a time. Let's find out if we have the authority, and we'll determine what we do at that point. Thank you.
All right. Motion and a second for the three, you know, to the AG, copy to the, a request to the Governor for executive order, and then a copy of the leadership, probably the same, same letter in a way, but been in authorizing the Chair to sign the letter. Okay. That's the motion and seconded. Any other comments being done? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item, please. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item F, consideration of three items for procurement.
Hello, Mr. Joe Thomas. How's your day?
Going well, thank you. Hope your days are doing well as well.
What are you purchasing for us today?
Well, we have three items that we're recommending approval of. And our first item is the Selectron Premier Pro Maintenance and Support, and that's for the Metropolitan Area Building and Construction Department. And this is a recommendation to accept the quote from Selectron Technologies Incorporated, and that's for a five-year period totaling $68,560. The second item is the On Call Roofing Services for facilities maintenance, and we're asking to accept the proposals from Mahaney Group, Diamond Roofing, and Ray Roofing. We're going to establish contract pricing for a period of two years with three one-year options to renew. And our final item is the Computer Aided Dispatch Records Management Software and Jail Management Software. This is for emergency communications and the sheriff's office. The recommendation is to accept the proposal from Tyler Technologies Incorporated, and this is in the amount of $8,412,384. And this is for a contract period of 10 years with options to renew. And on the phone with us is Ms. Alora Forshee, who is our Director of Emergency Communications, and she would like to share with you commissioners details pertaining to cost sharing for the CAD mobile maintenance. And so we'll listen to Ms. Forshee.
Good morning, Ms. Forshee. You unmute your phone. You're live.
I am unmuted. And to clarify, this is my first unmuting. That was not me unmuted earlier. Good morning, Commissioner Alora Forshee, your Director of 911. I did want to offer some information about the CAD maintenance pricing because it is a little different than what we have now. And just so that as discussion moves forward, that there's no surprise information or nothing that comes forward that you feel like you weren't given information on beforehand. And the current CAD system that we have, there's the CAD that is in dispatch, and then there's the CAD that is out in the field, in the vehicles. We call that the CAD mobile client or the MCT. So on this current CAD product that we have, there's one flat rate for it all. And so we pay for that out of 911 funding. And regardless of whether we have 1,000 accounts out in the field or one account out in the field, it is the same pricing. Every vendor that we looked at, that pricing model is not the current pricing model that's available. So for every software license that is out in the field, in the police car, in the fire truck, in the ambulance, there's a license fee for that. And then there is an annual maintenance fee that's associated with that. We had discussions, or I had discussions with our 911 advisory board about that different pricing model. And we are able to, thankfully, roll into the cost of the project within our budget, the initial license fees for all those mobile licenses to cover that so that there's no surprise fees or anything like that for any of our agencies that we serve. So that's what we are going to do, is have that as our initial project pricing. But one thing we are discussing, and again, with the advisory board, and we're going to have that discussion, is having every department that accesses those to pay for their own maintenance fees. Those maintenance fees end up being around $58.80 a year per device. And so for some of our bigger agencies, like the Wichita Police Department, for example, that ends up being about $16,500 a year. So it's not a huge price tag, but it is a new price tag for them if we decide to move forward with this model of financing the maintenance fees. These fees would not be due until the tail end of 2022 or 2023. And so we've got some time to make these decisions and allow these agencies for them appropriately. Again, this will be a discussion, or this will be a discussion with the 911 advisory board on how to move forward with this in a way that is equitable to every agency that we serve. But I wanted to be upfront with that so that if there's any discussions that come after the fact that come across your desks, that this is not new information to you. I stand for any questions that you have on this or anything else to do with the project.
Thank you, Ms. Forshee. Appreciate it. Any questions? Commissioner Dennis?
First of all, Alora, we appreciate where you have gone and the sheriff and everyone that's been involved in this. It's been a long process to get to this point. A couple of questions. First of all, you mentioned this is for maintenance. This is for purchase of this also, isn't it? Or is this just maintenance?
So the main, or the initial purchase is going to be covered under the project budget that we have already put aside for the county. So the fees that would be passed off to other agencies would just be for that maintenance piece. And so I wanted to clarify that that is not, that initial purchase is what we are going to handle within our project budget and that would be paid next year or this year.
Okay. A second question that I have is, as we've been going through this process all along, we asked Wichita to participate in it. And you mentioned Wichita briefly, but I didn't quite understand what's going on with them. In my opinion, they need access to our database, but they didn't seem to participate too much in the process, and they kind of went their own way on their database. So if they get access to this, they are paying for getting access to our management system?
So through the CAD system and on the CAD piece of this project, the City of Wichita has been a really active and great partner in this. And so for our review team, two of those members were from the City of Wichita, one from the Wichita Fire Department and one from the Wichita Police Department. So they were very active in the process of reviewing these bids that were put in, looking at these vendors, going through the demos. It was, they were a great partner in this, and they are on board with the vendor that we have selected. One of the things that we will need to do is to have an interface between this CAD system that we are selecting and the RMS vendor that the City of Wichita selected for their law enforcement records management system. We've already discussed the potential of that interface. It is quoted out within the project, and so that is included to allow that information sharing between agencies.
It's included by who? Are we paying for it, or is Wichita paying for the interface?
Well, there's two pieces to that interface cost. So there is an interface that is paid for on the CAD side, and there's an interface paid for on the RMS side. We would pay for the interface on the CAD side. They would pay for the interface on the RMS side because it's a mutually beneficial interface. We want to be able to get their information. They want to be able to share their information. So it's a cost-sharing proposition, and with each of us paying for our own side of the house, if that makes sense.
Okay. So the RMS access, they're paying for access to it?
I'm so sorry. The phone did not come across well. Say your question, please.
Their access to the RMS is paid for by Wichita?
Their interface on the, on NISH, on their, NISH is their product, their RMS product. So the work that NISH has to do to interface with the CAD system, they will be paying for. Within the quote that we have for our CAD system, their interface cost for us to interface with NISH, that would be paid for in our project budget.
Okay. Thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions or entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been a motion by Commissioner O'Donnell, second by Commissioner Cruz. Any other comments?
I have one question. Commissioner Howell? So on the financing part of this, I think, again, this vote is to approve the bid board item, but some of this is over a period of 10 years. So those items, are we paying for that over the period of 10 years? So some of this is year one, basically, but some of it's also over the, okay, thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
If I may speak to that, we have our initial project cost that has already been budgeted. What we did within this RFP is we asked for 10 years of maintenance that will be written into that contract. What we know is that we want these systems to be long-term systems. We don't want to go back within the next couple of years and bid out multimillion-dollar systems again. And so we wanted to lock in and secure some really competitive maintenance pricing over the next decade to have systems that are viable and cost efficient. And so what we are proving right now is to move forward. We've got the current project budget for that initial purchase. We will be looking at budgetary funding over the next 10 years, starting again at the tail end of 2022 or 2023 for that maintenance piece because that first year after we go live is included in the initial project cost. If that answers your question.
Yeah. That sounds great. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Been a motion and a second. No other comments? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Thank you, commissioners.
You bet. Thanks, Joe. Hey, Joe, next time, can you make the print a little smaller on our deal? Okay. All right. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent agenda.
Good morning again, commissioners. Tom Stoles, County Manager, recommending approval of items G through Q on consent today.
Okay, there's a motion, or is there a motion for consent items?
So moved.
I'll second that. Been a motion and a second to approve items, consent items, G through Q. Any questions, comments? Being done, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Madam Clerk, next item.
Legislative issues.
Mr. Papoon.
Mr. Chairman.
We already talked a lot about legislative. Add to that.
Mr. Chairman, I did have an opportunity to talk to our lobbyist, Jason Watkins, and I talked to, also had an opportunity to talk to Senator McGinn. Really, there's been no update in terms of the legislature and when it's perhaps going to be able to reconvene since we talked last week. But about the only thing of note that's been happening at DePica that you probably need to be aware of is that the consensus estimating group came up with their budget, or their revenue forecast for the fiscal year 2020 and fiscal year 2021 budgets. I'm sure a couple of the commissioners that have been in the legislature understand what the consensus estimating group is. This is a group that's made up of members of the Division of Budget, Department of Revenue, Legislative Research, and then they get an economist from one of the major universities. And in November and April of each year, they come up with revenue estimates, and these estimates guide the legislature and the governor on establishing a budget. And they release it every year on April 20th. And this year, the budget forecast is that for these two fiscal years, there is going to be a decrease in revenue by a combined $1.272 billion. So anyway, Senator McGinn didn't think that that would affect probably the 2020 fiscal year, but fiscal year 2021, unless the economy is up and running smoothly again, is obviously going to be a challenge for the governor and the legislature in funding that budget. So that's all I have at this point.
Okay. Thank you. No comments. So Madam Clerk, next item.
Other.
Does any commissioners have anything to share? Other.
I do. Councilman Johnson and I, along with Representative from Senator Moran's office, the Small Business Administration, and the chamber, will be hosting an online forum this Friday at 3:00 PM to talk about the PPP funding for small businesses. So if you have questions, please get those in. We can post them probably in the link below online.